And the way this will work is that the first round, and I had my husband do a random, so these are kind of random placements. Alexis is first, Tanya is second. Thank you. Thank you. For reach, sorry. And some of Tina gives last but we go rotate that. So the first part will be an introduction, which will be two minutes each, for you to tell us why you should be voting for you. Then we'll go through a series of questions, which will be one and one and a half minutes in length. If you want to go shorter, because you said what you want to say, that's always welcome, but we'll get out of your way. So the questions have not been shared with candidates, so this modelled the image of their knowledge and positions, but also their ability to think and respond off the cuff. The order of response, as I said, would be rotated. Candidates, please stop when you hear "perceive, time is expired." And that would call for me saying, "Stop." Okay. Anybody need, any people? Okay, we'll get started then. First of all, would you like to introduce yourself and tell us why we should vote for you? And I see I have two minutes left.
I'm not sure. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Alexis Mercedes-Ring. I'm a renter, a transit rider, I used to be a waitress, and now I'm running for Seattle City Council to fight for a city that works for all of us and not just to select relief here. I've spent my public policy career building a reputation of bringing people together around solutions and making them happen. I've worked across 30 counties, with over 100 different organizations. And as a graduate of U-Doc, I've done really critical public policy work in my career. I've brought together our King County community under a five-year grant to address homelessness. I've built King County's first severe weather response system because climate change is here and now, and we need to act to save lives, especially as we're facing the extreme heat. And today, I work as the system director at U-Doc's office. And I was brought to this work because of the upbringing, because I proudly raised my grandparents. When my birthdate was incarcerated when he was just a teenager, my birth mom lost custody of me shortly after that. And if it were not for my grandparents, I would have gone to the foster care system. But I got the chance to grow up in a resource community, proud of being household, and I was given the tools that I needed to heal. And I'm here today as a living testament to when we invest young people, regardless of their beginnings, we can change generations. My birthdate is alive today because of a transitional housing program. We need to protect those investments. And in the wake of our city's budget crisis, we need to step up, balance our budget, pursue progressive revenue to fully fund our city's services so we can develop housing, so we can help folks recover, expand our transit system, address climate change, and save communities for everyone. So I am really proud. I've been mentioned in my campaign. I'm proudly endorsed by a King County Democrats and every legislator who's just heard, fully located within the city of Seattle as of this week, as well as amazing progressive leaders in the Washington State Legislature, including Representative Patery, Senator Sotomayor, and many more. And so with that, thanks to you.
Hi, my name is Tanya Woo. I'm your Seattle City Council member. I'm a small public health provider, as well as a local health provider and a community advocate. I grew up in Beacon Hill and now live in the Rainier Valley with deep roots in Chinatown to National District. Seattle's my hometown, and I'd have to go anywhere else. So serving as your citywide council member, I tackle artifice issues head-on. I organize community safety teams to address public safety issues. I converted the historic Liza Hotel into workforce housing to combat gentrification and displacement. I championed government accountability and helped our unsheltered neighbors in crisis. As we are transitioning and finding our identity in the city, there are three priorities that remain crystal clear for me. The first one is we need to create safe communities for everyone. Every neighborhood has a difference in need for safety, and we have to be very intentional, making sure the right response is responding to the right situation. We must fully step our first responders and support common sense reforms to ensure timely and effective emergency responses. Second, we need to invest in early works to address homelessness. We need more resources that include addiction treatments, crisis intervention, and programs that bring people inside with a fentanyl crisis burden we can't afford to do the new strategies that aren't working. Third, we must address the rising cost of living. Affordability is really important this year. With my experience in developing affordable housing, I'm working on creative solutions to ensure that Seattle remains with reach for everyone. So I'm committed to delivering compassionate results and focusing on what matters most. I listen to understand and to learn. I believe I'm a charity player that wants to serve you. I'm Tanya Woo, asking for a vote to keep Seattle an affordable, safe, and compassionate place to live. Thank you.
We'll start right on time, so I can also get track. Also before, congratulations to Alexis for being elected. She qualified for the long-term actress. So that was submission also recently. Hi, everyone. My name is Tara Kesso. I'm the coordinator of the evening, and I'm running for Seattle City Council. I was born and raised in Incan Valley and currently live in Fremont. In Seattle, we are facing unprecedented regional challenges. I don't mean to remind a lot of you that everything from our community well-being to our fundamental rights are being challenged up and down, from the federal level to the local level. What we need in this moment is a global perspective and how, as someone that can apply that with a local lens. A lot of things I've talked about here have seen the way the city was transformed over time and seen how we've failed to find a tiny way for the growth that our city has stepped up to. Whether it was the decisions made for the interstate, whether it was not taking the federal line for a reliable training and support system, or whether it was the way that we designed parts of our social safety. I'm really passionate about this, and I decided to run because I grew up in public housing among a lot of refugee communities. I relied on programs on food stamps to cover rates. And now I'm a homeowner and I live with my family, my wife and kids. My experience and perspective and passion is the reason I'm running. I'm tired of seeing the people in the communities that I'm part of slowly be forced out in these cultural institutions that we shouldn't. A lot of the issues that we have are interconnected. We require innovative solutions and fresh perspectives that can make all of it together, not just piece me up. The last few seconds, and my areas of social programs, equity, justice in our communities, and boosting the pretty subjects. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sanjita Sanchez, and I'm also a voter of Seattle. I was born here in 1983, and I grew up in Holly Park and moved to Way, Gardens, and then Esther Terrace. I experienced busing from the South End to the North End, and that experience showed me a lot about how the people of my community get left behind. And I am still one of those people from that community being left behind. I still live in public housing, and I'm actually proud of that. I chose to live in public housing because I believe that when we share each other, we share resources with each other we all thrive for. From my living in public housing, I connected with neighbors, and they helped me in the Office of Community Health Housing, where in the first two years of my being on the board, we are forming the Resident Advisory Board, where members from every single building in the city are now meeting and assessing how to maintain our buildings as a community, as residents, as our homes. And that's the kind of work I've been doing in Seattle for the last 20 years. I sat on the board of Lincoln Motors, Seattle King County, so I came to work to make sure that voting rights as a corporate brand are available for everyone. And I really look forward to getting my experience with transit riders who have been, which endorsed me as a co-founder of the Urban Safety Service Work Group, because they know that when a passionate advocate is able to advance, we all can. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Now, this will be one and a half minute responses. And they, we will start with Tanya as we rotate. So just pass the mic on, down and around. What is the issue you hope to tackle immediately alongside Tanya? What issue will take longer, but is still important to you? Why?
Thank you. Since I have built housing, I believe building more housing is of paramount importance, especially since it interests a lot of the issues we see within the city, affordability, the local and urban health neighbors. And so something that I'm tackling currently that will take time, because sometimes CFA is involved, is looking at how to incentivize development, especially looking at the current process, since I've been through that process, and making sure, how do we streamline that? How can we look at our current developer incentive programs, like MHA, MFT, and FTE, and how do we really examine what's working, what's not working, and break relevant up to this year? And so I'm working on a couple pieces of legislation that involves that developer incentive, very similar to the communities, but it's with data and the Office of Housing and the MTE formula to make sure that there is that current balance of developers incentive and community benefit to make the AMIs down and help people who really need housing, which is people within, I believe, 50% AMI, under, which is averaging income, try to get that forward. I'm also looking at ways of helping fight contagious placements, looking at cease and desist orders on predatory real estate listings. We think our homeowners are inundated with home visits and phone calls and mailers trying to sell their property. We need to be able to help people retain.
Thoughts?
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges with this race is that terms one year, you go for a election again. But with that moving in time, the first thing I'd like to work on is expanding the management response strategies. We've seen some really great success with the carers union and similar efforts across the United States. And you see, when you provide a more graceful interaction when someone is faced with competition from a safety issue, it helps produce better outcomes. So that's the first thing that I'd like to do. The second thing is, I'd like to work on building out a more holistic plan. I know we have a top line that just finished up, but I think that there's more that we can do that partners with local communities, constantly empower local communities to be able to both ensure that their community members are at the state of their safe places, available, and based on, and ensure that when we're building, when we're looking at building housing, when we're looking at building urban centers, we're actually ensuring that we're building it in a way where we can have communities as a part of. Because the one of the challenges that we have with housing is that they're just buildings that are completely built. By the way, I believe there is much more than buildings. It's people, and I think that is something that I'm going to see.
The first thing that I'm going to tackle is our homelessness crisis. We have a lot of people currently speaking on the streets, and I believe that if we stabilize people where they are and actually provide services that we can make a big impact on people being able to access the housing that is currently available and make sure that we are able to tackle a long-term housing project with slightly less urgency when we know our neighbors are being taken care of. I helped support a warm-in-shelter near Calumberson Park during the coldest days of winter. We made sure that if, when we were evicted from the spot, we were able to reform that same day to make sure the caseworkers and the people who were surviving on the street and didn't have access to public warm-in shelters or anything like that were able to still survive. And so that's one of the things that I believe, that if we stabilize people and make sure they have supportive services like sanitation, bathrooms, garbage pickup, we can maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods and increase people's quality of life who are currently not having the best time. And in terms of long range, that's easy. 24/7, there's provided bathrooms and parks in every single park in the city. As, I know there's small parks, we can't even go in all of them, but we need to focus on those kinds of day-to-day needs of our community. So that's my long-range fun.
So the issue I'd like to tackle in the immediate term, and something that will absolutely take longer, is the financial health of our city. We are facing a $260 million budget deficit. That will have tremendous consequences on our ability to do our work across the city. We don't know where cuts could be, but I think we should be clear that if we don't act to pursue some type of additional revenue option, there will be cuts, and we don't know where those will be happening in. I think we can do a lot of work also by focusing on the financial health of the city. This will do right by our city workers. The departments right now have been under this financial stress and this looming deficit. This will bring some more stability to our city work. And I think it's important to note how we got here. And there's a period of reasons, but the one that I think we should elevate in this moment is that the city, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, stepped up and used federal funding to deploy resources to create means to programs that our community needed to survive in weather that was a terrible time for all of us. And the fact of the matter is, the needy community remains. It's probably higher than ever. And so with that, I am committed to finding an equitable way to address this, of course, by finding a way to pursue progressive revenue, making sure that corporations are getting their fair share so we can keep our libraries open, our schools open, people fed, develop housing. All of these things require funding. Thank you.
I think they deserve a applause. The next question, again, an hour, a third, an hour and a half, a minute and a half.
You're running.
You're running.
You were running for one of the two county, citywide council seats. How do you see the role of this position differing from that of the district seats? And how would you expect to collaborate and coordinate with the other council members?
You want to start?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, seeing that it was this seat specifically that was opened up kind of cemented my decision to run for the city council. And one of the things I'm really excited about this in particular is it requires a holistic perspective on the city. We know that Seattle has been historically, is still suffering from the history of redlining and the regressive tax system that has built public infrastructure that is unequal between the more neighborhood to another. And so how it differs from the specific district ones is that we need to be able to figure out how are you building plans with equity across different positions? And I think that is a positive thing. The other part that I think is really important is it gives you a broader perspective of what are the big issues affecting different parts of the city. Right? Like, you know, if I was representing Seattle, I'd probably worry a lot about transportation, but the grid goes out, right? And I imagine number 10 did. But when we're looking at the broader perspective, it can maybe give you a perspective of how different issues link together in a way that you may not seem just focusing on one particular district. So that's, that's what I think what excites me about this position and what my position is, is really important.
Okay. I agree. Yeah. District eight being citywide means that you have to consider the needs of everybody in Seattle around the decisions that are made. And I think that this particular position interacts with the other council members by giving a little bit of a pressure release on each district office and another place for residents to come if their particular district representative isn't quite with them. So that's why I think it's also very important that we have a diversity of opinions, a diversity of viewpoints of world-wide experiences on the council, because we do need to make sure that everybody is comfortable engaging with our political system. And that's not the reality that we have right now. I do really love to organize in community. I, as a transit rider junior member, as a KESP by Little Club advocate, I've done a lot of work in making sure that we have bike lanes and pedestrian access all over the city. And so I know how each district is affected by the safety issues, and I do want to make sure that those problems are solved interconnectively. And that's, I think, the best thing about this position is you get to help the whole city connect to each other. And I think that also counts for the districts connecting within each district too.
I think one of the most exciting things even campaigning so far has been being across the city and learning about all the complex differences and issues that communities are facing, and what is similar, what is similar across communities? What are the kinds of challenges that we're facing that connect us? And how is it different? And that is the exciting part about the citywide position, being able to work across our whole communities and honor those differences, and also threaten being able to bring those together to create a comprehensive strategy. And I'm excited by the opportunity to work with each of the district-specific representatives on the council, just given my experience working across 39 cities in my professional career. When I worked for the Sound Cities Association, I staffed for 40 different people at once, representing 38 cities. And so really working across the spectrum, oftentimes in office meetings with folks, maybe eight people each representing a different city, all kinds of meetings, trying to bring folks together to see what are the things, what are the common threats that we cower to at the time? And being able to campaign change that way, doing a lot of hard conversations along the way to get to that point. And similarly, doing that work while working across our county to figure out what is our strategy for addressing homelessness? What can we agree to do together? And that's kind of work I love doing. That's the heart of the work, because I fundamentally agree and find that government is hopefully agree to do together. And the heart of it is, I mean, the issues of, you know, finding where do we agree, how can we move forward, and how can we serve them?
As many of us here on this table have grown up in Seattle, I grew up in a small business environment. My family had mom and pop restaurants and bakeries. So I grew up, as a little kid, worked at my family's restaurant, Marguerite, we took the restaurants. We had a Monty Hay Bakery, your next Excel's at the U District. But every single day, I call myself a lifelong waitress because I'm still working in a restaurant essentially after, after work. And so learning and growing up here about how different every single neighborhood, every single community is and the intricacies, as well as running last year in the district, District 2 South Seattle, and growing up in the Chinatown to National District, one of the most underserved neighborhoods, your poorest neighborhood in the city, but also one of the most endangered neighborhoods in the nation. So I believe government should really aim to serve those who are at most in need of services, who traditionally have not had a chance to give their voice at the table. And so campaigning District 8 is very different than campaigning Citywide. We learn that as we go. As well as, you know, last year, amazing friends along the campaign trail, with many colleagues here who I work, work well with and collaborate with, and support especially, since our district representatives know their communities, know their constituents. And so how do I support them? How do I work about how each person in their district works? I mean, some of them are a little more protective of the district than others, and so making sure we're stepping our feet toes and working together, but it comes with the formation. Thank you.
I was saying, I feel like Phil Donkey, but I'm not running as much. So now, we talk about Citywide, but West Seattle has no services for people experiencing homelessness. And yet, there are thousands here living outdoors on our streets and in the green belts. No shelters, no daycare, no day centers, no feeding programs. Private citizens and local churches offer services by themselves without help from the city or county. What do you propose for services for our unsheltered neighbors?
Thank you. Oh, I'm. Okay. So as I said earlier, I spent basically January through March supporting a warm-in shelter next to Calumberson Park in my neighborhood on Capitol Hill. And we do have lots of resources in my district and my neighborhood, but it's still not enough because private citizens like me are also doing a lot of the social outreach to our housing neighbors right now. And I can tell you from personal experience, thousands of dollars of supportive material were thrown away in frequent evictions that we experienced in those three months. And that is, we're not only not being supported by the city, we're being punished. And my main focus in getting into office is bringing that voice and that perspective to the halls of power and making sure that a strong voice who is still being affected by these issues is present in these rooms. I think we should support, rather than punish, neighbors who care for each other. We are neighbors. We are Seattleites. And whether you sit beside or you're currently forced to sleep outside, we are all neighbors, and I want to make sure that the people who step up in each neighborhood are supported with comprehensive services like sanitation and garbage pickup, and human services caseworker in touch. And as I said in my opening, stabilizing people, making sure that we know where people are when they don't have access to phones and electricity a lot of times. That's how we are going to make an impact in this area. Thank you.
I love this question because it's how I spent two and a half years trying to do my work. So as a planning director working on homelessness, one of the first things that, actually, I did coming into that role, having no previous D1 set, was building out actually, where are all of our services? Formal, what are all of the shelters, day centers? Where are the geographically located? And that went out in the District by District. And of course, what we found is that District 8 is very limited services. What followed with my subregional planning team was we actually held a district-specific workshops for every district and brought together some of the partners that are working most closely with unhoused folks in every district to talk to and say, you know, especially for D1, there, without the formal services there, where are people building a new, formal services? Where are the places that are common? What are they trying to access? What are the most common needs? Trying to develop base-based strategies to that point because that is the heart of how we can actually create a meaningful service system. Because our services, we used to work like an ecosystem, and having a range of supports geographically accessible is really important. And that's something I committed to working on and was working on. Of course, we need funding to be able to bring those things online, and that was something that I held firm and thought for trying to bring online additional services from day-to-day basis to what goes can be to get connected to regional housing supports and so on.
Talking to a lot of community members, I hear that we're, the city's failing us quite often. And I think this is where, an area of the failing of our unhelsted neighbors. You know, we focus so much on housing first, but I believe, you know, while we need the housing, we also need services as well. We need the wraparound service especially. And I think we need to really use city money to invest in what's working. I love groups like Reach, LEED, and those outreach groups that's funded through HSD, Health Services Department, Health Services Department, to be able to do that work. And while I do believe in the regional approach, I think it's also all about implementation and getting down to the very level of on the ground and what is happening. I know there's a lot of issues with meeting people's needs, especially when people don't want to go to a private shelter. They want a tiny home village. And how do we make sure we get to know people? We built that trust so that when they go inside, there is that one friend or partner or service worker, kids manager, who will partner with them to help them throughout their journey so they're not losing trust in getting a new person they haven't yet to know. A lot of people move around. They want to stay in a certain community. They want to stay with their friends. How do we build that community? Especially, I think we really need to tackle this from a ground level and a people level and make sure that we're compassionate at the same time. My work with Community Watch, we go to cabins, and we get to know people, and part of that is seeing people, listening, acknowledging.
I think something that all of us have tackled and mentioned here is there's a lot of amazing on-the-ground work happening in this. We are existing in a community that has a culture of compassion. We are basically funding a city that has a culture of compassion. And what I'd like to see is be able to figure out how can we bridge the grassroots work that's happening in communities with the institutions and the resources of the public state. One of the really big things I'd love to work on is finding those opportunities for the community partnerships. Because we have a lot of communities that we're English is not their first language or they have mistrust of government because of coming from war-torn regions. Community organizations, as we saw, are providing a very big help to fill that gap. So I'd like to see more partnership with that. I'd also like to work on expanding the number of caseworkers and social workers we have to bring that more personal approach. But again, one of the other things that I'd also want to look at is expanding the concept of the housing in cities. We talk about resilience in housing, especially in the comp plan and really in perspective of climate. What if we follow up on the massive community resilience in cities? Where you can go there for clean air when there's wild forest. Where you can go for food shelter when it's hot outside. And we have such a community center situation, we just need to figure out how do we monetize them and build them the massive possibility of that.
All right. Well, we're gonna stay with the theme of housing this time, depending from where it's coming from. Seattle is an intensive housing market, causing many to lose their homes, be forced out of the city, or for the most unfortunate landing on the streets as homeless. Are there more humane ways of dealing with unhoused residents than sweep? What would you do? On the other hand, how do you propose to deal with personal security concerns, real or perceived, of residents as they see in encampments popping up across the district and the city?
So two examples, I'm gonna talk about two examples of two programs that we've seen success in when it comes to addressing housing stability and addressing homelessness. When it comes to an alternative to sweeps, we've seen great success with the State Ride-Away Initiative. What is that? That was a project and funding performed by Governor Inslee to address encampments on state ride-aways. And through partnerships with WAPST, as well as the Canadian Council, and the really important service providers that do the work, like PDA, this is an approach where funding is performed and we go through a process of spending weeks on time to have these workers develop a relationship with folks that may be in an encampment, develop a wide list, develop, and then through this initiative actually provide a housing option. And seeing if we're sounding successful, we're offering a housing option, a place for somewhere to go, folks would accept and remain in that housing option. So this is something that's been tremendously successful with multiple successful encampment residents being a part of it. The other thing I want to talk about is a result of a resource being available through the American Rescue Plan. These were called emergency housing vouchers. These were vouchers that were made available as a result of the pandemic. The vouchers were brought to the housing authorities, so Seattle Housing Authority, King County Housing Authority, and through our partnerships with housing authorities, we're able to successfully use all of them in us.
So I agree that sweeps are not ideal. No one likes sweeps. But for now, what Alexis was talking about is similar to the city plan, where months ahead, you go to an encampment and try to connect people to resources, services, and find people housing. And before that resolution happens with that encampment, there are a lot of people who refuse these services. And that requires building that trust with a case manager and having a partner with them through their journey. And so my group, the Community Watch, we go to encampments and we invite everyone and businesses, maybe from our community, to walk with us. And many times I've heard after walks, people are like, "Oh, I'm not an housing organization." But no, we're really kindly friendly. I'm like, "Yes!" You just get to know your neighbors, get to know your community. And so I think, you know, there's that private-public partnership where there are a lot of amazing organizations doing this work, but there's also us as neighbors in our community who can do this work as well and go out and build that trust, build those relationships, try and help people with resources to help make that connection. And I think that helps a lot, especially when you build that trust and know somebody. And there's that perception of public safety versus the reality of it. And I think that perception is like, excuse your mistake, Seattle, and we need to get to know what's real.
I think for one of the things to prevent it, we need to stop incentivizing housing as an investment in Seattle. Like there is, with all people that are getting calls or, "Oh, I want a house," and they'll take it and they'll quit it. Fundamentally, we need to be able to build more housing that fundamentally focuses on like finding ways to keep people in these communities where they're able, instead of having to move them further and further away from a place of political comfort. With encampments specifically, I want to see more embedded response within the living spaces in camps. Because we have a lot of people who are in these situations, have a lot of jobs, have usually some temporary conditions that are dating in there. And so we need to have some of the resources embedded. I think this work and the partnership comes, comes with a respect for that. By working with local community organizations that have been trying to address in their own circles, it can help kind of build it as a more safe environment and also address some of these safety concerns. Because like, can imagine, builds that proximity and that closeness. And this also provides the opportunity for expanding to the, what I mentioned before, which is like extending a caseworker, social worker for the city to be able to provide more comprehensive services.
I live a lot on land use policy. And I comment that, I bring that up because I think that hostile architecture, it leads to hostile society. And I mean that by, the question in particular caught my ear in terms of humane treatment of our unhoused neighbors. And sweeps are inhumane. And encampment resolutions are basically sweeps by another name. I was at an encampment resolution this last week where somebody was, you know, basically told, "Do you want shelter?" She said, "Can I do this?" "No, that's not available." "Then I can't go there." And then she was swept. So there was no long-term meaning, hanging out, trying to get connected to her. And yeah, the trust of our unhoused neighbors comes from the reality that we don't have the resources and they don't have it. And so we need to make sure that we are supporting the neighbors that we've already mentioned, that come into the encampments every day and bring food and bring shelter and bring resources and make sure that they are stabilized. We have, we need to make sure that there are sanitation services, waste management, bathrooms, and caseworkers that meet on a regular basis, that all the wraparound services are needed. We need to support neighbors first.
Okay, we're gonna change the topic to climate. We had lots of questions we could have asked, but this is the one we are going to do. As the world is experiencing, the effects of climate change are coming at us faster than previously predicted. droughts, floods, wildfires, infestations, failed crops, madis migration, all are happening. As daunting and overwhelming as these conditions are, what would you do to make Seattle a leader in responding to the challenges of climate change, both in trying to reduce our contribution to carbon emissions and in protecting us from the inevitable effects of those changes?
Thank you for that question. It's a really important question because the, as the Chair of the CLC, City Building, Arts and Culture Commission, this is something we're tackling. It's beautiful daylight today, and we do think about our ice caps and the electricity generation through our electric dams and what's out in the future, how to make sure we're ready to resilient and making sure that we are sustainable from gas to electric. But at the same time, I'm not leaving our underserved, marginalized communities behind. And so how do we make Seattle a leader? I think we, we look at not only conservation attempts, but we also look at the environment. You know, we're not meeting our tree canopy goals. We're supposed to get thirty percent, and we're not meeting that. And we're not on target to be able to reach that. And so I think that comes with some things my community is looking at is the tree strategy plan. How are we able to preserve and plant our trees so that we're not living on heat islands and heat deserts, basically? And are able to help, you know, especially communities that suffer the most from the lack of trees and open spaces, be able to enjoy those areas. We need to look at how are we able to, you know, switching from gas to electric is very expensive. How do we help communities, especially people of mixed income or refugees or in a rich community, be able to make that switch? We also need to look at making sure that these resources are available to those communities and they're aware that they're there. Another thing we need to look at is a lot of policies and legislations regarding not only privacy, planting more trees in our next generation, but also planning on conservation as well as looking at what the state's doing.
I think one of the things that we're also missing, kind of going off of the others said, on climate change, is that we need to make sure that we're doing so in economically just manner. Like one of the frustrations that I've seen is that a lot of the solutions for climate change rely on individuals having resources to do. Whether it's, you used to go buy an electric car, which is, you know, thirty thousand dollars. We're spending, you know, multiple millions of dollars on a new Ferraris with a bunch of extra waste from parts that could have been used while. So I think that with this lens of economic justice, we need to start thinking about, we're in one of the most innovative parts of the United States and the world. We have the talent to try new things. And a lot of the solutions that we see happening at the national and global level start locally. And so I think what I'd like to say, I'd like to see more partnerships with resource organizations that we have here to think through new ideas. Like maybe we don't replace all the Ferraris with electric Ferraris. Maybe we start pursuing, I was reading the other day about algae-based biofuels that we can use as droppings for every car on the road. That's much better than asking everybody to buy an electric car. So I think we need to start thinking about what's that experience that a person has to do to, has to take every day? And what are the solutions that we can pay big about to really comfort this issue?
I get to talk about land use again, yay! Because yeah, land use is directly tied to our environment. We build our cars, and cars are the vast, vast majority of our carbon emissions. And so if we don't get serious about transitioning ourselves away from a car-centric, oil-based society, we aren't ever going to beat our climate goals. And I take our lead. I believe that we as a city should be much more involved, taking a lead from Coast Age people and the Duamish tribe specifically, who are still here in Seattle and have tended this land since time immemorial in a very sustainable way. And I know that there are programs already in place with the Duamish. There are restoration projects that are being supported. And yet I still see the Duamish tribe coming into meetings with the city council and begging for EDI to not be changed and they're being ignored. So I think that we really do need to acknowledge the people who actually have the long-term experience on this land and know how to tend to it first. I also think that in terms of our current policy, in terms of how we are in reality, the floor-to-air ratio is a very technical term in terms of building. And that's one of the primary ways that we're going to save the tree canopy because the vast majority of mature trees are on private land. And so we don't make it possible for people to build out the land that for more housing. We keep land, if we keep floor-to-air ratios small and tiny, that's gonna destroy much, much more trees.
We need to adjust transition to a greater economy. And through that, really focusing on how we invest in our transportation infrastructure as well as our housing and just residential and how we build our infrastructure moving forward. With that, we can do a lot in terms of expanding our transit system to make it a more enticing option, an easier option than using a vehicle. We talked a little bit about the fact that vehicles, we built our city around prioritizing passenger vehicles. But we can do, we have made ours of being able to have more types of transportation options. The white road right between Half-Bill to U District Town is six minutes. That is the fastest way to get there, without a doubt. That is a better transportation option. But also looking at the fact that, you know, a third of our missions also include our buildings. And so making sure that we are supporting the transition and implementing more key concepts as well is something that we can be doing, building towards to lowering emissions from buildings. We, as Seattle, we have one of the highest standards in green energy in our building code. And we can take steps in order to make sure that all of our infrastructure gets scaled up, be able to meet that code. And we also elevate that, you know, as was mentioned, EDI was a regret a couple of weeks ago. EDI, the Equitable Development Initiative, is funded through Jump Start Funding. Important to also note that Jump Start cost of funds are green deal initiatives. And so standing by and protecting, making sure that that money is going into our climate investments is a priority.
That's right. All right. Well, we're gonna change a little bit to, "The Seattle Times recently editorialized about violence in and around Seattle schools and concluded that proposals by the Seattle School District for increased mental health services, for example, are important in the long run, but they are not adequate to address the current situation. A call from the mayor and city council to take action to protect our students. What measures would you propose and support to address this problem?"
Yeah, but the mental health is definitely a very important component of it. I think what we fail to address a lot of these, we fail to address the systemic factors that are caused by this. I'm of the, I'm of the opinion that we're not inherently by the people, we're pushed to by this in one way or another. And so I think what we need to do is ensure that we are building, so it's back to what I was mentioning about having a social system in, ensuring that we have food, we have shelter. People are going to be less drawn to, more by the means or theft or other types of crime when they feel that they have their needs being met and when they feel that they're being listened to. So I want to see more engagement, not just with students, but also with families to figure out, are we giving them, are we giving our children a stable home, a stable environment, as good as it is? But I think that's, that's one thing that where we tend to deal with those problems basically by boxing with specific agencies or initiatives or jurisdictions or whatever. We need to start thinking about what is that whole picture? What is the student experiencing that is driving them to these situations? And that's what we like to focus on.
Yeah, violence comes from desperation, in my opinion, too. We, we know for a fact that universal basic income works. There's been studies done in the United States and around the world that when we stabilize people and bear a minimum of worry, we fed, housed, and clothed, that they thrive. We, they bring more to the, to their own lives and then they start to contribute back to society. And so we do need to invest in the social safety. And I think that as Seattle, we could implement a Citywide EDI. That is a long-range plan, but it is something that I've worked with advocates in the Seattle area for years. And I would love to bring that idea to City Hall and be a strong advocate for that kind of service. I also want to speak specifically about kids and schools. When I was in teacher training school, we did exercises. And one of the, you know, exercises was about a kid who was feeling angry and violent. And the kind of thing was like, "Are you hungry?" Right? That's, that's what we as teachers were trained to ask first. And that goes back to the basic needs, is like, we have violence in our society because we treat each other like we don't matter. Like the tax-based dispersion of our schools is based on property value. And so can we work the PTSAs around the city? Can we work together and make sure that our resources are more evenly distributed amongst all the schools instead of being in one area?
This is such a complex issue and, um, what helps me stay grounded in some of this is thinking about this kind of three main tranches, like, how do we prevent? Would, how do we, what are these solutions and policies that we put forward towards prevention? What changes do we need to make about our immediate response? And then how do we help communities heal also in the aftermath? Um, I committed to in this campaign, listening to communities most impacted by violence, which is why I was at Parkfield after the issue a few weeks ago. Also, a neighbor, I live in the Central District, fifteen blocks away, and so really showing up to just being a community member. It's an emotional thing to think about, um, because there's a lot of pain there that will continue to be pain until we are really investing in young people and giving communities the supports that they need. And that was the common thread, heard a cross from parents and students, we need to invest in young people now or forever. There's still so much that students are carrying coming out of the pandemic. And also, we know that many young people go to school hungry or experiencing all kinds of things in the household too. And so looking at the prevention plan, how do we continue to invest in young people from wherever else? What kind of changes do we also make in terms of our immediate response? And looking at how do we help communities heal in the aftermath of all of that? How do we truly make sure that we're building a felt response in the hopes that we never have situations like this, but worse?
I grew up here in Seattle. I did not grow up with school shootings, we cannot normalize this, but I think growing in a time of gain wars, um, I remember growing up, my mom would, oh. I remember growing up, my mom would make us lie down, take a nap because they're just shooting right outside of our house. And I had, my sister was in the gang, um, I had cousins who got stuck in the game crossfire. And, you know, I feel like that's what we're not talking about, is, is, well, there are still gangs out there, they're unstructured. So I think we really need to focus on our youth, we need to focus on prevention, um, mental health, especially mental health in schools. Hurt people hurt people, that's the bottom line. And so I love to see more mentorship. I met her, a young woman who pulled a knife on her classmates and threatened to slash people and, you know, I met her and she was an amazing young person and went on to go to college and do amazing things. And so I think there'll be more programming for our young people, uh, making sure that our community centers have late-night basketball, our libraries are open, and that community comes out to support our kids. We also need to especially listen to these communities that are affected with violence. I know that this is going to be a hard conversation, but like, do we need school resource officers? What do the kids want and what are the administration wanting and how do we help with that? Um, I think we also need to make sure that there are, you know, something I'm working on is the youth prevention initiative. How do we get families involved?
Thank you, and I apologize. Um, apparently the battery died. Is it?
Should we do that?
Oh. Wait. All right, I, I am sorry, Tanya. Thanks for picking on me. Okay, the next question is about the transportation plan. Uh, in April, the council adopted a twenty-year transportation plan. In May, the mayor put forward a one point four five billion dollar transportation levy, which will appear in November ballot. I hope that's correct. Do you support the levy? What do you think will be the most critical features of the levy and the transportation plan?
We must have missed you.
I know. Where are my, where are my notes? Uh, I've actually been, uh, very active with the transportation levy, uh, uh, support group, uh, with my activities with Transit Writers Union. We're collaborating with Seattle Public Greenways, with Urbanist, with a lot of other organizations. We're trying to make sure that we maintain good transit access for our, for our city and we don't, uh, delve into depending on security forces as a way of funding or putting our funding into transit because that's not going to actually improve the transit services. If what we really want to do is make sure that we have clean and safe buses, maybe we should hire a, uh, for to clean the buses at the end of every route, right? We choose what to prioritize, where to put our money. And some people think that somebody, uh, just being a security guard versus somebody who is there to actually take tickets and assist the driver. These are programs that have around the world. And so I think the transportation levy is a good start. We need much, much more money. We need to focus on sidewalks very much. We don't have sidewalks in most of Seattle, not most, sorry, in most of, uh, District Five and District, uh, One and Two. I apologize. I'm, I'm, there was a, a lot of numbers are going through my head right now because I'm just like, one of the things in terms of our advocacy is that we seem to want to spend more money on cars instead of transit and need to make the exact opposite decision.
Well, I'm somebody who doesn't have a car, so any investment in expanding public transit, I'm excited about because it makes you navigate the city easier. And so with the transportation plan, really excited that we're going to be seeing the levy coming through. When community groups came together to start identifying the needs that we really need across our communities, from sidewalks, from buses, from trade, from, uh, light rail and so on, uh, as well as bike infrastructure, the need was identified as costing about three billion, which is much higher than the current levies being proposed at. And I think it, you know, it speaks to what our communities want to see in terms of our coming infrastructure. People want to be able to move through the city easily in a climate-friendly way and be safe in that as well. And in the past couple weeks, we've seen that further exemplified by the unfortunate traffic-related deaths that have happened. We need to be working towards Vision Zero and creating a safe community for pedestrians and then that pedestrian, and not having a car. If I can walk there and it's reasonable, I will. Um, it is frightening to think about our community members that, um, that have passed on because our streets were not safe enough. Those are necessary investments and I'm committed to making sure we can use skill, making sure that the levy passes so we can be able to expand and do the transportation investments, but knowing that we need to do a lot more to expand our transit system and make safer streets for everybody.
So yes, the transportation plan and the levy coming up in the fall. We don't pass this, we will not have money for our roads for infrastructure. And so I am excited about this once-in-a-lifetime investment. Uh, it's one of the largest levies, transportation levies ever. Um, and right now, the city council, they're taking the mayor's plan, we're adding our own amendments. Um, we, there's been amendments to increase the plan and amendments to prioritize districts for more sidewalks. And so I believe that we are, have not, our, our vote is coming in beginning of July, the first week of July, where we actually vote amendments and vote on the, uh, transportation levy and that vote is going to appear in your ballot. But yes, I agree, we do need sidewalks. I think sidewalks is the united factor of everything and making sure that those sidewalks are safe around the schools, have side, allow sidewalks to transit, um, especially making sure we have sidewalks to our, um, that are safe. The city sees a lot of losses, you're going to have sidewalks, how do you make sure that that doesn't go, happen going forward? Uh, we need to definitely, we're not, Vision Zero is kind of stay the same, we haven't gotten better with traffic deaths. Um, and so how do we really make that investment to improve those numbers so that people aren't dying on our roads? Um, we also need to especially look at making sure that under certain neighborhoods, um, people who are of mixed incomes, I mean, they're looking at anywhere from four hundred to five hundred a month for this levy that they can have certain meaning.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm really excited about the levy as well, like everyone else here. I think one of the things is that, you know, as much as I'm like frustrated about how the rest of our tax system is, this in the long term is going to save money for everybody I have in the world. Um, I think one of the things that, uh, this is a, this is a way I approach policy generally is that we want to incentivize the things that's best for the community. And there's two ways to do that. There's one is ensuring that everyone has the capability to live with a car. And two, make sure that that process is easy. I could drive from Fremont to downtown, but I can't put it on the parking. Or I can take a bus that comes both for me and more people than I can afford it. Uh, and, or I can take, uh, a bicycle over one greenways. So focusing on that, that's going to be really important. I think in a lot of the places where we don't have their coverage right now, we need to focus on mass transit systems. Um, Metroplex is a fantastic program that, um, we've seen rolled out across Renton and Skyway, we want to see more of that expand to other places so that we can connect people to these data points, especially as we expand light rail and mass transit. Focusing on making the process easy, like the, the metro I have in my head is, it shouldn't take more than fifty percent longer to take a bus to public transit versus a car. And I think if we can keep that perspective in mind, start looking up the, through this, I think we can get there and I think it is a nice experience.
Okay, this is going to be a one-minute, um, question. So, um, I'll give you one at a time. So we're going to do finally, not all of you will actually get a seat on the city council at least this time, right? But before it has a, you know, but if you could give the ultimate seat council member a skill, attribute, or position from your two lots, what would it be and how do you think it would help the council member be the best representative they could be for us?
I think in this moment, we need a council member who is able to truly work across all communities and bring people together and put the issue on the table first and be able to really hit the vision, do the hard work of figuring out where can we be in the middle? What is the absolutes that we need to get through and where, where do we find a break? How can we work around that? I think the ability to work across and bring communities together is what we need in this moment. And being able to do that with integrity and being able to do that in an honest and transparent way is a skill that is, is really needed in more tools of government. I think we'd be able to move the needle a lot faster if we're just not honest about, you know, where we stand and have somebody who's willing to do the hard thing, rally the hard conversation, create the space for people to engage honestly. That would be what I wish for.
The last scale, I would hope that this person will have, and I'm sure they have already, is being able to listen. And, you know, we have, we've been talking to you all night, but I think the most important thing is to have to hear what you have to say, what you've seen, what issues are most important to you. We don't help the survey, we should be out public. We also are here to serve you. And so we hope to pick somebody in the fall who really will listen, who will take all the factors and all the issues and circumstances and make a reasonable decision and somebody, especially who you can get ahold of, someone who you see out of community, you can talk to, I think is very important. Um, and I know everybody at this table has that amazing skill. Um, and, you know, sometimes some things get really stressful and there are a lot of things happening all at once, that you just gotta take a moment, breathe, stop talking, and listen. And then I always tell people, you know, I don't have very many visualized ideas, like, all my ideas are from you. So I hope you will reach out and thank you.
Uh, I'd say I give my powerful visibility. No, we didn't. I might have been here. Um, I'd say the big thing is ultimately, we all have to be healing in certain ways for a reason, whether that is an experience that we had growing up, whether that is even a small element that we find on our running block. There's always a reason behind something. And whoever has this position, I think fundamentally needs to hold back, especially in these city-wise positions where you're working for diverse people with so many different backgrounds. Fundamentally, understanding, there's a sense of understanding how people behave and what drives people. And I think it's how we really build a city that's actually connected and rooted in community, not feeling so sedentary as we have felt in the last decade.
I'm going to go compassion. Uh, that's one of the things, that's one of the skills that has served me very well in life. I, uh, didn't know I was autistic until I was about thirty-four, thirty-five, and I experienced a lot of prejudice that I didn't understand because of the different ways that I communicated, think about the world. And so I had to develop a lot of compassion to others and try and understand how the rest, the majority of the rest of the world kind of saw things and were able to communicate that. And since then, I have become an autistic communications teacher and I teach, I work with people who are having fundamental disagreements in terms of, you know, what, how they approach a topic and being able to see that realization that they agree on something, they were just saying it in different words, is really powerful. And so I think that's compassion is what is going to serve the council member well.
So now it's two minutes for closing and we'll start with your time.
So I believe that complex issues demand hands-on solutions. Um, and our person of action, I'm without a community. When the pandemic started and everyone was closing their doors, I strapped on my mask and I went out there and started walking around my neighborhood, making sure our residents, our small businesses, our house, neighbors were okay. And basically reaching out, trying to build that trust in our communities. When I saw that there needed to be more housing, I helped, um, we had, I helped develop a building, um, from fire-damaged shell into eighty-four units of workforce housing, which only charges our ten percent of their income, so no one's forced to pay where they cannot afford. When I found out that, you know, my community did not feel like it was being heard, um, tried to connect more community members, non-speaking speakers, refugee immigrants to government. So took them to the city council chambers, county chambers, and tried to get them fully engaged with their representatives and their electeds. They really want their voices heard, they need to go to the powers of government. Um, and so trying to make those connections, I'm most interested in how do we connect communities from this way to government so that these resources are available? Um, and that's something I think about every day. Um, I, I like to bring hands-on solutions and to fill that commitment to our constituents. I like looking at nuance in that gray area and looking at all sides of an issue. And so I believe that my community work has, is applicable to the entire city when it comes to housing, affordability, when it comes to how do we help with economic development. And sixty percent of the general fund in the city comes from being out of tax, from our small businesses. And I think that's a way of helping these, how do we start entrepreneurship? Um, how do we help with economic mobility? How can we close that wealth gap within our communities, especially help our black and brown and communities of color be able to access the same resources that everyone else in this state can't access? And so those are the things that I'm most interested in and I'm encouraged to collaborate and empower communities and create a thriving city. Thank you.
First of all, I think everyone who are coming here, I know it's a wonderful day outside and I hope it's about to be outside in here, um, safe. But I think one of the things that I want to, and I'm going to ask myself to think about as we move into getting closer to the primary, is really thinking of how can we make, how can we bring someone to this position that really makes government work better for everyone? When I go to a library, when I go to get help for advocating for elections, I should feel that same level of welcomeness that I have in my corner store or a coffee shop I go to every day, or the library, or, or the, um, different community organizations, churches. Fundamentally, that is what I think that someone needs to, which he needs to do. We need to be able to look at what are the challenges that we are facing as a broad community and really take that to the highest level. I want to be able to go to my representative, get a response from them and say, hey, it looks like there's this problem that we've noticed here, this is the thing that we're going to do about it. And I think that's what, you all have a right to demand from whoever you put in this position. Um, the other thing I'll use my last few seconds is, um, everyone has the license to not qualify at the rapture, so I encourage you, uh, if you have five minutes, even if you're not voted for, any of us to, uh, kind of help assign to qualify, uh, because that is, is free money for elections and it is really present. Thank you.
So I, I'm kind of disturbed by that, like, you know, like, oh, I have to take that now.
You'll be ten seconds.
But basically, as I started my opening, I am a daughter of Seattle. I was born here in 1983. I went to elementary school here through the third grade and then I moved down to Fresno because of my dad's family from there. But after my years of management, I was back and for college at Seattle University 2001. And in the last 20 years, I have served Seattle. I served Seattle despite having very little because I know the more I get back, the more I, more I give back, the more I get from my community. I worked at Treehouse for Kids when I was in college because I was a former foster kid for a while. I worked with Cascade Bicycle Club because I know that transporting our streets is going to have a direct impact on our environment and our quality of life. I work with Transit Riders Union. I'm currently working with the Seattle Rental Organizing Council to develop an Office of Renting Standards so that both people who rent and people who provide housing are able to have a one-stop shop, as it were, to resolve conflicts and tensions and make sure that everybody is on even playing field. And I think that's really the fundamental aspect of this role right now is that we aren't all working on even playing field. Star mentioned, like the Democracy Voucher Program was meant to enable us, people like me who have negative wealth and come from a lack of resources, that we were supposed to be able to run a really strong campaign with public money, but now we have to raise money before we can access public money. And so these are the kinds of details that leave people behind. And as somebody who has directly experienced this my entire life, I know that I have the knowledge and the determination to make changes and make sure people listen to the changes I need to make. Thank you.
I mentioned earlier that I was brought to this work because of my upbringing and being raised by my grandparents and seeing what my birth parents went through from their experiences with substance use disorder, homelessness, incarceration, I've become, committed my career, my life to try and to work to safeguard, protect families, serve people in every way, minimize harm that happens. And with that, I fully believe that I'm here today because I have community resources around me. And I'm committed to making sure that we can keep those community resources and continue to invest in people. And so that is why a couple of weeks ago, I testified twice to protect the End Civil Development Initiative because we cannot balance our budget deficit on the backs of black and brown communities. We need to protect our investments, we need to fund our city services, and we need corporations to pay their fair share. I've bridged my experiences across the board from being a waitress to being a counselor for Planned Parenthood, you know, the people with the catalyst that you avoid, you know, work to fundraise for Planned Parenthood. I've led protests against the Trump administration, multiple demonstrations, really fighting that fight. And I've brought governments together under unanimous votes multiple times to try and create regional solutions, bring people to the table, be focused on solutions. And I continue to do work bringing institutions together in our budgeting office at UJAD. I'm ready to tackle the very real challenges that our cities face, like the budget crisis, our housing crisis, and climate change. But more than that, I'm ready to do the work to make sure that our rights are safeguarded as we look at the potential, and I guess the potential, I truly do not hope it comes to us, but the potential of the Trump presidency. We need a strong courageous leader on council who will make sure that important legislation remains in place. We are protecting our rights. Thank you. Thank you all.